Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Good afternoon, Vidal. I can hear you.
Good afternoon.
I can hear you.
Good afternoon. I can hear you as well.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Nahar. Good afternoon, Commissioner Trujillo.
Good afternoon, Max.
Commissioners, staff, afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Welcome to the afternoon.
So it's 2 o'clock. Are we ready to begin the meeting? Are we waiting on anybody?
I'm ready.
Okay, so today's meeting, public notice was disseminated for today's meeting. The San Miguel County Board of Commissioners will hold a regular monthly meeting on Tuesday, December the 8th, 2020, beginning at 2:00 p.m. This meeting will be held virtually and can be viewed online at www.sanmiguel.nm.us. During the meeting, a county board of finance meeting will take place. Notice to people with disabilities, if you are an individual with a disability who is in need of a reader amplifier, sign language interpreter, or any form of auxiliary aid or service to attend or participate in the hearing or meeting, please contact the San Miguel manager's office at (505) 425-9333, at least one week prior to the meeting or as soon as possible. Public documents, including the agenda and minutes, can be provided in various accessible formats. Please contact the county at the above number if any, if a summary or other type of accessible format is needed. At least 72 hours in advance of the meeting, the following agenda for today's meeting was posted and available for public inspection on the San Miguel County website at www.co.sanmiguel.nm.us and also available in hard copy at the office of the San Miguel County Manager's Office. Today's agenda, call to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Madam Chair Maria Martinez.
Here.
Vice Chair Chris Nahar.
Here.
Commissioner Harold Garcia. Commissioner Janice Farella.
Present.
Commissioner Max Trujillo.
Here.
I'm here, Commissioner. Can anybody hear me?
I see Harold on the screen. Yes, I can. Can see you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Nahar, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which has one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and infinite. I salute the flag of the State of New Mexico and the ZSM will all perfect friendship among united posts. Okay, so before I ask for approval of the agenda, I have an an agenda request form that was submitted by Ms. Eileen Sedio, Human Resource Supervisor, that the items presented will be the approval of the holidays for the calendar year 2021. So they wanted me to add that to the agenda item before we approve the agenda. Excuse me?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve agenda with the agenda.
Madam Chair, I have a question for our legal counsel about adding an item since it's an action item, if that would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. I also wanted to add an item to the agenda, but it's informational only. So if we could hear Madam Chair from our counsel on if we add this item, Ms. Sedio is asking us to, since it requires approval of action, I mean, action of approval today, if this would be a violation.
As I understand the facts, Commissioners, Madam Chair, the, there is a request to add to the agenda today, right during the meeting or right before the meeting. The request is also requiring commission vote and approval. And because it requires that, it cannot be allowed. It can be presented, it can be discussed, but it can't be voted on.
Okay, thank you then. Therefore, we will table the item presented by Ms. Eileen Sedio for for action item today.
All right.
Madam Chair, I have one item to add to the agenda for informational purposes only.
Okay, what?
And Madam Chair of Commissioners, as I understand the facts, we have a request to add to the agenda today, a matter for discussion only and informational purposes only. As long as it's not going to be voted on, it is appropriate, but the location of the item could be placed and probably would be better placed in the public information section of the discussion.
Okay, so what what item was it that you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, counsel. The item I'd like to have an update of information is on the ambulance. We had an update last month and nothing has changed or moved, so I'd like for our manager to give us an update as to how it's going on with the release of the ambulance to this district.
Okay, and Ms. Eileen Sedio, are you on?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, do you want to present what you on the public input as well, or do you want to hold on till next meeting to get it? Because we're not gonna, we're not gonna vote on it today.
So it's basically for the holidays that are already approved in the personnel ordinance, but that's fine. We can present it in the January agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you. So then we'll move forward. Do I have a motion to approve today's agenda with the change made for public input? By motion by Commissioner Trujillo? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nahar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, do we have anything else? I need a approval of minutes for November 11th, 2020, regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Nahar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Trujillo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we move on next to public input forum. Did anybody call in in reference to that, Mr. Manager Martinez?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so at this time, you can present the update on the ambulance?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, we are still in the negotiation process. And in that process, we will negotiate having the ambulance, the new ambulance and the old ambulance housed in the Pecos area.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Commissioner.
When is that release date and is this following the process? I know there have been procurement and a lot of process that I've excuse me, been aware of, but on the, but not fully aware of how it all works, like making sausage, but on that end. But on, when do you expect that that ambulance will be released to the area?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, we're hoping by the next month and a half.
Thank you. So we'll move forward. If there's nothing else for public input, we'll move on to new business. Today, it's recognition of outstanding elected officials, Commissioner Chris Nahar, Commissioner Maria Martinez, and County Treasurer Bertha Bustamante. Today will be our last meeting in attendance for the commission. So I would like to say, I personally would like to say thank you to, first and foremost, my husband and my familia for the support they've provided me for through this four-year term. And to the constituents of San Miguel County for electing me to serve this four-year term. And the wonderful employees that we have at San Miguel County. Everybody does such a good job. I know that it's not always 100% we have, but every job needs to be tweaked here and there. I'd like to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the Public Works Department, because in my tenure with the commission, they addressed all the issues that were brought forth to me by my constituents in reference to roads and other issues that that came forth. Thus far, you know, there are still a couple of things that need to be looked at, which will be brought up in this meeting today. But again, you know, I want to just thank everybody. I don't know if Commissioner Nahar has anything he wants to add.
I do. I as well want to thank the employees of San Miguel County. We're certainly blessed. I've worked in a lot of places over 40 years of public service. And most of my career, I've been in supervisory position. And I can tell you that the employees of San Miguel County are probably the best that I've ever worked with. The professionalism that they exhibit, the pride that they take in their work is tremendous. I'm so happy to have worked with them. It's been an interesting four years. Been some few bad times, but mostly good. I'm very happy to have have been here. I want to remind the Commissioners that it's
I can't hear you.
Mr. Nahar, we lost you.
We can't hear you. Okay, so I'll go ahead and continue. I don't know if Mr. Nahar doesn't know that he, we can't, China, I think he left, says he left the meeting, but also
How about now?
Commissioner Nahar? Now we can hear you. Mr. Nahar?
I'm not muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Now we can hear you. You were gonna remind
I'm sorry. I don't know how much of that you got. I was reminding the Commissioners, if you can hear me, put your thumb down. If you can, I was reminding the Commissioners that this position is never about us. It's about the position that you hold. And I've held several election positions, and my motto was always, always to treat the position with the dignity and respect that the position deserves, reminding ourselves that we represent a district and the districts are the ones that put us there. It's important to get involved in other matters of public safety, for instance, or public welfare or health. But first and foremost, foremost, you represent your constituents within your district. If you keep them happy, they'll put you back in office. Another thing that I'm extremely proud of is that in the four years that I've been here, my record may be tied, but it'll never be broken. I have not missed a single commission meeting or single special meeting to include canvassing of elections, and I'm awful proud of that. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Nahar.
That's about all I have to say. Thank you all. It's been a pleasure to serve with you. Commissioners, Counselor, Eileen, thank you for the great work that you do. And I'll be sending off. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Nahar. Also, I would like to, you know, thank my fellow Commissioners for, you know, the time that we did spend together, the four years working together. And also, I would like to wish luck to the new Commissioners coming in, the one that'll fill the position that I hold, which is Martine Senna, and the one that'll hold the position that Mr. Nahar holds, which is Kenny Medina. I wish him the best of luck and to keep working for our districts and if if my help is needed at any time for any reason, I'm here. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. So if we have anything else, I'll move forward.
I'd like to say thank you. I'd like to thank you also, Madam Chair, Commissioner Nahar. It's been a pleasure working with you and serving with you. And I wish you well in your new endeavors of whatever life, wherever life takes you. Thank you so much for your service to the county and for being a fellow Commissioner, for listening to me and for working out things out and always for being there to at least listen and work, try to work things out. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Trujillo.
I'd also like to thank Chairperson Maria Martinez and Commissioner Chris Nahar. Maria, you've always, you've always been a fine example for all of us, representing your constituents. You've never been, you've never held back in you know, verbalizing, for your people and there for your people. And I, and I really respect that about you, and I'll always respect that about you.
I can't hear nothing either.
And Commissioner Nahar?
Yeah, me either. Okay. Did you hear what I had to say?
No, no, I didn't hear nothing. I can't hear nothing. My screen is frozen.
Commissioner Nahar, we can hear you and we can hear Harold too on the phone. So your microphone is not muted. Harold is muted. His microphone is muted. Can you hear me, Commissioner Nahar?
Harold, can you hear us?
He's muted.
Harold is muted, but he should be able to hear us.
I could see Harold now.
Yeah, but his screen is frozen.
Okay. It might be his internet or something.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner, I mean, Manager Martinez.
I think we have Bertha Bustamante on. I know, I don't, I was, I think she's there too.
This is Chris Nahar. I'm on the screen and everything. I can't hear a single thing that anybody, me and Harold are completely locked out. It's a loud sound.
Can you turn off your mic, please?
Turn off my mic?
Yes, please.
Okay. Muted.
Bustamante, are you there? Go ahead, Eileen.
So we do have recognition clocks, these beautiful clocks, for each of the three elected officials, outgoing elected officials. And so I'd like to read each one of these. And so Vice, Madam Chair Martinez, when you can come
Chairperson Martinez, can you hear me?
Commissioner Nahar, I can hear you.
See, the problem is that I can't hear you and neither can Harold. Harold just, I just talked to Harold. And I can't hear anything that the conversation that we're having, I can't hear you, but Diego tells me that you can hear me, so. All right, but I can't hear anything that's going on over there.
So I don't know if we'll have to, because then, okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Eileen. Commissioner Nahar can hear.
Okay, so these, this plaque reads, presented to Chris A. Nahar in recognition of his years of service from January 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2020, San Miguel County Commissioner, District 5, four years of public service presented this 8th day of December 2020 by the Board of County Commissioners and County Manager of San Miguel County.
Yay!
And then we have this one, presented to Maria Al Martinez in recognition of her years of service from January 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2020, for San Miguel County Commissioner, District 4, four years of public service presented this 8th day of December 2020 by the Board of County Commissioners and County Manager of San Miguel County. They're beautiful, so please, when you get a chance, come visit me and pick them up. And finally, our last recognition for presented to Bertha C. Bustamante in recognition of her years of service from January 1st, 2013 to December 31st, 2020, San Miguel County Treasurer, eight years of public service presented this 8th day of December 2020 by the Board of County Commissioners and County of San Miguel and County Manager of San Miguel County.
Yay!
Thank you, Bertha.
Thank you, Ms. Eileen. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Okay, so we'll move on to regular order. Item number one, resolution urging the legislature to pass the House Security Act. Presenter for this is Dana Millen, PhD Outreach and Education Coordinator for the House Security Plan Campaign and Pat Lehan, Peace and Justice Committee.
Diego, you're gonna have to move him over. Dr. Dana Millen and Pat Lehan, are you there? Go ahead and start when you're ready.
Yes, this is Pat. This is Pat Lehan. Can you hear me? Maybe a thumbs up or a wave. Great.
Can hear you fine.
Great. And the other presenter is actually Dr. Mary Felbloom. Dana is not with us today. Greetings to our Commissioners, Madam Chair, County Manager, County Attorney, and all the support staff and essential workers. And congratulations to our county public servants who are now moving on to other adventures. They may be less stressful adventures for you. And to the incoming members who will continue to work on behalf of the people of our county, thank you all for your service. And thank you for allowing us to present today. It's a topic of great importance, health security. We're all talking about health these days, right? So we're gonna be talking about health coverage security for New Mexico, a state that is deserving of greater access to even better care. First, I just want to take a moment to mention COVID-19 and the importance of mask wearing. I always take a platform to do that. Please be sure, everyone, that you're wearing your mask and that it covers both your mouth and your nose. And please consider not having holiday gatherings this month. I know it's difficult. We need to get our locally economy back on track and prevent the further spread of this virus. And for anyone who needs a free mask, they can call the Peace and Justice Center here in Las Vegas at (425) 3840, (425) 3840. We've already distributed over 2,500, and we want to be able to get more out there to people, so give us a call. So the Health Security Campaign. Dr. Mary Felbloom, an incredibly hardworking person, joins us today to request the county's recommitment to supporting the Health Security Act that will be before our legislature in January 2021. This will be an exciting session, I think, as the HSA comes closer and closer to passage. And I'm hoping 2021 will be the year that it happens, and we need your support to help make it happen. Mary and her team have worked tirelessly to try and bring this healthcare coverage to everyone. And we at the Las Vegas Peace and Justice Center, we were actually among the earliest supporters of this incredible campaign. We thoroughly read the studies that were done. They were, the Mathematica study was the first one. They did other studies since, and we became convinced that this is what New Mexico needs and deserves, and it will save our state money. So we'll be asking for your support on a resolution that you previously supported with other counselors, Commissioners in those chairs. So we're asking for a re-upping of that commitment. We want people to be able to have access to all kinds of great stuff, just basic medical care, but also acupuncture, chiropractic, better behavioral health programs, healthcare prevention services. You can actually, through the Health Security Act, get prevention ser, you don't have to get sick before you can be provided with services. And so many other things that it would provide. And Dr. Felbloom can explain more about the Health Security Act, which is already supported by so many organizations, individuals, city and county elected bodies, medical professionals, local businesses right here in our town, and nonprofits here and across the country. So thank you for your time today. Love to hear from Dr. Felbloom right now. Thank you.
Great, Pat. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Buenas tardes y gracias por esta oportunidad. I am the Executive Director of the Health Security for New Mexicans Campaign, been involved with this, I feel like, since 1890. A long time. This is a very homegrown, homespun plan that has been developed by New Mexicans over the years. And what it will do is cover, almost automatically cover, almost all New Mexicans, with the exception of like the military and the tribes can voluntarily join. It would be complete, no more networks, complete freedom of choice of doctor and hospital, including across state lines. And it would, the services offered, Pat kind of laid out them, are no less than what state employees have. And and maybe your staff, your county staff has those services. They're very good. They're very, they're really, they do focus on prevention, good mental health and acupuncture and just, it's a, it's a good package. It would be administered by a citizens board, a geographically representative citizens board, which I think is very, very important. This would not be Albuquerque, Santa Fe dominated at all. 10 of the Commissioners would represent consumer and business interests, and five would represent health facility and provider interests. And actually, of the 15, only six can come from Albuquerque and Santa Fe. So the majority, nine, come from outside Albuquerque and Santa Fe, traveling around the year, around the state for many years. I know that's very, very important for rural New Mexico, to feel like this is your plan. It would be paid for by using existing healthcare dollars, such as Medicaid, and then premiums based on your income. So if your income goes down, your premium goes down. And there's sliding scale, and there would also be employer contributions. And I know you didn't drive to this meeting today, but your automobile insurance, workers' comp, commercial automobile, actually goes down under this plan, because if I break my leg in a car accident and this health plan pays for that broken leg, there's, you can look at your policy, you'll see that there's a portion, a large portion that goes to healthcare, and so you don't have to pay double. Same thing with workers' comp. It's a much more integrated way of paying for healthcare. The bill itself, which was called the Health Security Act, which has been introduced over the years and improved in 2019, the bill has always said, let's look at whether the cost of this. Let's see, is this, is this something that's financially doable? And in 2019, the legislature appropriated actually $400,000 so that the Legislative Finance Committee could conduct a fiscal analysis of the Health Security Plan. There have been two other studies in the past, one in '94 and one in 2007, that also looked at the impact of health security on our health expenses. And all three have concluded that if we do some old-fashioned health risk pool, young, old, healthy, not so healthy in it, and we shift the role of insurance, so you could buy extra, you're gonna save a lot of money, and that's exactly what the latest study demonstrates, that the KNG study says it, that we'll be saving, actually, within five years, hundreds of millions of dollars. And and I've been talking overall in the state, not just state government. And that will have a huge impact on governments like yours, local governments as well as state government. So at this point, the sponsors, our main sponsor for many, many years was Senator Carlos C. Snidows. And as you know, he has passed away, unfortunately. And but Jerry, Senator Jerry Wapdizipino has taken on that responsibility in the Senate. And Representative Debbie Armstrong, the Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee in the House, has taken on that responsibility. And the word we've been getting is, we've already done three studies, you know, we know that this, that this is a good investment to make. Question is, how do you set up this plan and how it will work? So what's going to be introduced this upcoming session is something called the Health Security Plan Design. the Health Security Plan Design Act. So, and there are a lot of decisions that will have to be made. How are we gonna get enrolled? What, when, how, when are, are premiums going to be accepted? And if I go to my doctor, will he be paid? You know, there's a lot of steps that would have to be thought out very carefully. And the plan won't be perfect, so what are our rights? So the estimate is that it's, it's going to be perhaps a three-year process, a go-slow process. Let's do, this is a major change for our state. Let's do it slowly and carefully. And so that's, the Health Security Plan and Design Act is setting up a process. And the first year will be, you know, they'll focus on a certain number of tasks. The legislature will have lots of input. There will be public input into the process. There'll be, you know, advisory committees, and it's, it's going to be, I sort of described the Health Security Act as, and because I like to cook, as a recipe, and we're gonna be the cooks. And that's what this, this process outlines. Let's do it carefully, slowly, and come up with something that is really smothered in green and red chili, that's ours, that addresses our needs in New Mexico. So that's basically what it is. I hope you have lots of questions. It's been a long time since I was before this commission, and there are new faces. And so, you know, I, I, I don't know if you've ever heard of this before, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Madam Chair?
You're muted, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, you're on mute.
Commissioner Varela, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Mary, nice to see you.
Great to see you.
Yeah, I know, I have not heard of this. So you said, is it a complementary to Medicaid? Or is it part of Medicaid, an extent, ex, expansion of it? Can you explain how that?
Well, you know, we have a relatively small population, 2 million people. And what we have is a very complicated insurance system. We, and physicians tell me, some of them have, you know, 100 different policies, different copays, different deductibles, some of them from the same insurance company. It has become so extraordinarily complicated. In addition, you have public programs like Medicaid, you know, that also add to the complexity. So the idea is to simplify this. Why not, you know, set up our own plan like a co-op? And, and, and so that you have most New Mexicans that we covered. There are exceptions, and Medicare is very complicated, so that would be on hold for a while because of, you want to make sure everybody is protected with what they have. So it would roll in Medicaid. You'd have to get a waiver from the federal government. And we have, I think, a president then, and a new Secretary of Human Services that would grant us any waivers that we would need. So that, that you're integrating your, our healthcare dollars in a way that is very financially effective. The KNG study said, you know, if you put state employees in this plan, you put Medicaid in this plan, the state itself is gonna save money. And, and so, so we would all receive a card. The exceptions are the military, military retirees, they have their own plan. But we would receive a card, we go to the doctor of our choice, and that physician would be paid. And there would be negotiated rates that, for physicians. And they would have a say, and there's actually dispute resolution if they can't agree. Does that help you, Janice, Commissioner?
Yes, it does. And you did explain how it's integrated with the private system and, and Medicaid. It's just, there's a lot, but it sounds like a good step in trying to bring it all together and try to simplify it and understand it.
Yes, it, what it does is it shifts the role of private insurance. If, you're all too young to know about Medicare. But when it was passed in the 60s, what it did was, this federal government was self-insuring those over 65. And you could purchase extra supplemental insurance, or your employer could offer it. And so think of this, this as that. So we're shifting the role of private insurance, so you can imagine they're not happy with this. To, to, and so people and employers could buy extra. They could also become what's called third-party payers, big companies like Intel, for instance, self-insure. They come under a federal law called ERISA. They collect the premiums and they ask Presbyterian or Blue Cross Blue Shield to process them. Well, this plan could do the same thing, but there's a caveat. It says, we want anything that's done for this plan, the jobs have to be created in New Mexico. There is, my premiums go out of state, they're processed out of state. KNG was supposed to look at this, but they never did. But you know, what, what percentage of insurance tasks are done out of state? And how we can shift those and create jobs in state? So that's another positive thing. But it is, when you share the risk, and that's what insurance was about originally, young, old, healthy, not so healthy. In a state with a small population, it makes a lot of sense. And, you know, I've been talking to a lot of doctors and hospitals, and there are, and particularly with COVID too, they're, they're under enormous stress. And the thought of simplifying a system of not having such a complicated coding system that can, that this design process will allow the state to, you know, the doctors and hospitals and all of us to figure out something much simpler and accountable. And another exciting piece of this plan is something Senator Ortiz Pino is, is so worried about, the, how our hospitals are hurting so much, particularly with COVID. There is a system, and I bet you, I would, even my board didn't know about it, it's called global budgets. It's European countries, Canada, Japan, a lot of countries, they pay hospitals, they have a negotiated budget. There's no more pages and pages of, you know, of coded, you know, you're gonna be billed for $50 for Kleenex. And, and so it's called a global budget, or a negotiated operating budget. And what's so fascinating is that, and this may be relevant for your hospital, is, is that Maryland and Pennsylvania are two states that are experimenting with it. And what's even more exciting, given our budget crisis, is that CMS, the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, has dollars, federal dollars available for any state that wants to experiment with this. And so Senator Ortiz Pino wants to sell, develop a task force that explores how we can do this in New Mexico. It would be a voluntary program that would be very, and discussions with some hospitals, they realize it could be very helpful, having a guaranteed revenue stream. And, and to apply for the grant monies. And to start that process now, we, our hospitals are, in particular, our rural hospitals are in such a serious situation. We cannot afford, I mean, it's gonna take three years to get this health plan up and running. We don't want the hospitals collapsing. And so there's interim steps that will have to be made to make, there's another program that Senator Jeff Steinborn from Las Cruces set up, which is the Inter-Agency Pharmaceutical Purchasing Council. The idea that, wow, why don't we consider bulk purchasing of drugs? And it, and there was a study done that if our state agencies just did bulk purchasing, and that would include the counties, it would save millions and millions of dollars. And there's a fiscal impact analysis of that in our Legislative Finance Committee. So there's lots of things that can start to be done now to, to ease the path to our own health plan. And of course, once the design, the design is, is completed, then you're gonna have to have another cost analysis. But as designed, not projected, what if? But, you know, as, what will this plan as designed cost? And then all of us will want to know the revenue side. What, and now that we have a new president to be, we'll know more about federal dollars with Medicaid. What, how much can we count on Medicaid? Are there other federal dollars that we can use to offset the cost? And then what will our premiums look like and employer contributions look like? And of course, how much our, our auto insurance and workers' comp premiums might go down, which have to be added to the mix? So it's, it's, I think, it has to be done carefully. And, and we're gonna be the cooks on this, all of us. This is a, one of the things that I've been working with the sponsors, and I told them, the process has to be very public, very accountable, very transparent. And we need to make sure that we get experts, you know, that can give us ideas. We may not like them, or we may like them, but, you know, will figure out, stimulate us into thinking. I've been telling doctors, I know, I said, did you know that in Switzerland, physicians are paid by the hour? I, you know, it's like, what? I mean, instead of all that horrible coding, so if you see three patients who are easy in an hour versus a difficult one in an hour, you know, you don't have to do all that crazy coding. They, obviously, Switzerland has some requirements, but I'm fascinated to find out how they do it. But those are options. Why not, let's look at, see what, how other, other areas of the world do this and figure out how, what's good for us.
Ms. Lehan?
Yes, sorry, but thank you. I have a quick question for Mary that may be relevant to our county, I'm not sure. But Mary, let's say you have a county that also has a jail, and they take their detainees to the hospital for medical clearance before they take them to the jail, and the county can end up accumulating a very large bill. How could the Health Security Act help with something like that?
It, it would definitely help. I remember talking to the President of the Sheriff's Association. And he got very excited. He said, oh my God, you know, we have very, we have people who come into the jails who are quite sick. They've never had healthcare access, or they're on drugs, or whatever. And, you know, giving preventative care and giving access to everybody, he said, it won't stop crime, but it will may have healthier prisoners. The contract with that, there's, it's very complicated, the contract system with jails to, to various hospitals and health services. And, and this, in the three-year design period, it's going to, we'll figure out how, how to do that. So if there's a global budgeting system, that will definitely, you know, benefit the jails. And, but, you know, some of them use private companies, and there's some questions about the costs of that. And I think all of that has to be investigated, see how, how can we provide a cost-effective but quality healthcare to so many of our residents that haven't had access to it? And those of us who do have access, we want security. We want, we don't want to feel like I've been working for this employer for many years, then under COVID, I'm fired and I lose my insurance.
Thank you. Is there any other questions by the commission?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Garcia?
I'm looking at the resolution, and the bottom, maybe mine is the only one that shows like that, the, the, the supporting document. But at the very end, it's, it's not, it's not complete. So I don't know if everybody else's is the same, but where it says be further resolved, that's San Miguel County. And then it says the New Mexico Municipal League. We belong to the New Mexico Association of Counties. What position is the association that county is taking on this? Because I'm on the board for the association of counties, and I don't believe that this has been brought up to us.
No, it hasn't.
And so, so how, how can we be supporting something through the municipal league when we belong to the association of counties? And it might be just as simple as, I don't know. Has that been researched?
Harold, Harold, I'm wondering if you got the city resolution. We presented to the city a similar resolution. I wonder if that's the copy you got? I don't know.
The one that I got is what the county manager's office provided to us. And, and so it, it, it doesn't have a signature page on it. I don't know if the rest of the commissioners have the same template that I do. But the one that I have isn't complete, and then it talks about the municipal league. So we're not, we're not associated, we're not affiliated with the municipal league. We're with the New Mexico Counties.
Commissioner, it does sound like you got a municipal resolution.
Yeah.
That's what you got. And the other concern I would have is, it, I don't, because I haven't seen it. Does it talk about the Health Security Act itself, pass, you know, supporting that?
Yes, it does.
Because it's not, it's not the Health Security Act is what is going to be the Health Security Planning and Design Act. You know, it's, it's.
So would it be? Would it be okay for us to table it now and then maybe act on it at the January commission meeting, being that the template might not be the accurate template?
I would be very pleased, Commissioner, to review it and make suggestions for you, for your attorney and, you know, who's ever, whatever, however you want to proceed. But I would definitely be very pleased to look it over, just to make sure it's accurate.
I don't know where our manager got this from, but maybe he could answer that.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I just text messaged Ebony Montegoan, and she indicated that she got that from Dr. Barbara Casey.
So is it okay if we table it at this time and, and bring back the final resolution at the January commission meeting?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Nahar?
Yes, recommendation that, that's a good idea that Commissioner Garcia has. It means that there's going to be, new commissioners are gonna take over, and that they should have an opportunity to put, have some input into this resolution. It's, it's another month, it shouldn't affect it that much, so if that's fine, if that's okay. I agree with Commissioner Garcia, she has a suggestion.
Okay, Commissioner, go ahead, Ms. Lehan.
I just received a text from Dr. Casey that Ebony was given the, the county version. So I don't know if there was a mix-up or what, but there may be the proper resolution sitting in the county office, I'm not sure.
Well, without, without us seeing that, it's hard for us to, to say that we're gonna approve it because we have, it's not, the, the one that I'm looking at is a municipal league one.
Any other input from the other commissioners?
I say thank you for bringing this to our meeting, and it's a great idea. I'm especially excited to see how this could help with our inmate population and helping us with that, and everybody, all of our residents. So I think it's something, it's worthy of support. We just need to have the right resolution before us. So thank you for your time. It's good to see you, both of you, Pat and you too, Mary, thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner, you?
I have a message, or, or a question for Mary. So would this be like a comprehensive health plan that all New Mexicans could opt in for? And, and is it, is there any other states that have liked, adopted or, or created something similar to what we're looking at here? I think it's a great idea, by, by the way. I, I, I think that, you know, this would, this would bridge a lot of people without healthcare to being with healthcare. And, and, and I think it's an amazing idea. I think the whole concept of it is, is great. I, I think the possibility of, of the state of New Mexico, counties, everybody, saving millions and millions of dollars, I think, I, I can see the possibilities there. I, I, I have a private insurance business, an independent insurance agency. And, and I, you know, I look at things like this all the time. And, and, and I've often thought about how we could create something like this. And, and you've, you've nailed all the great points about doing some kind of, not universal healthcare, but you're kind of shrinking it down to New Mexico size. So I applaud you for your work there, and I'd love to learn a little bit more about it. I, I'm interested, and, and thanks for the presentation. So but, but, so is there a model that you guys are using, maybe from a different state? Or something like that?
Actually, no. This is, I mean, there were, in the early 90s, there were lots of states that had what were called single payer bills. Were trying to develop a plan for California, Minnesota, even Kansas had one. And a bunch of us in New Mexico looked at those bills and decided, you know, had some ideas. And Representative Max Call and Lucky Breda introduced the first bill in 1993. And since that time, we have gone around to rural areas of the state, many areas of the state, asked doctors, business owners, you know, what Asked doctors, business owners, you know, what if we were, if New Mexico were to set up its own health plan, what would worry, what would we worried about? And so we've had workshops, we have a bill that, um, has been reviewed, been revised numerous times because of feedback from a lot of people. Um, and I have read bills from other states that, uh, cause they've developed too, but I, we have the best. Um, I, I was at a, uh, at a forum once and, um, there's California, New York, well, you know, what's New Mexico, right? And when I told them, I said, you know, we go out and we talk to people, we ask them, we have, they want to read the bill. We have a workshop on how to read the bill with a table of contents and an index. We want feedback. And it was like silence and a couple of people said, well, your bill must be watered down. And I looked at them, I said, no, it's gotten better. It's begun workable because we've listened to people about how to make this possible, given our state. We have tribes in New Mexico. We've gone to them, we've asked them, they are sovereign nations and how would it work for them? And we're the only coalition in the country where the all pueblo council of governors has endorsed this. The Aseki Association, the Hispanic farmers and ranchers. I mean, it's very, I mean, it's really, and, uh, what's exciting too is thirty-seven counties and municipalities since nineteen ninety-six. Cause you, as you know, counties and they change, uh, in terms of leadership, but, uh, have, have endorsed. And we've gone to some that have re-endorsed and, and it's been at the local level, this fascinates me, it's been bipartisan. I went to Roswell, one of our, uh, board members, Juan Oropeza was a city councillor. I ended up going down there three times and that, and the Roswell City Council endorses. Um, there was four Republicans joined, two Democrats out of ten. Valencia County recently, uh, there are four, uh, Republicans, one Democrat, they endorse it. My own county, Sandoval, Republican, endorse. So it's been bipartisan because people like the idea of New Mexico, as some of them have said. Um, I like the idea of our state. I'd rather go to Santa Fe to complain than I went to Washington. You know, let's, you know, and we can set up something, we've tried to set up something that is, um, guidelines. That's what the bill does, because we're going to be the cooks, as I said, but, um, you know, to, that allows us to really think through how we're going to provide good healthcare, uh, access and encourage doctors. And what's exciting for me is a lot of physicians are very excited about this, you know, oh my God, this is such a nightmare situation. The services offered are not, see, some of the states bills, it's like they include everything, dental, long-term care. Nobody really knows what the real costs of those things are. So what we said, let's start off with what the state employee services are. That's a good package. We know it's very comprehensive. And if those savings kick in, then, you know, we'll have been in a wonderful position of, you know, figuring out what, what do we want to add to the package. Other thing I want to you to think about, and a lot of people I know have not thought about this. This is like a co-op. It's not a state agency running it. It's a citizens board. My premiums go to a company out of state. They invest it and, and Commissioner Trillo, you know, companies do that with that's part of their revenue source is sitting on those premiums, um, and making money off of it. But why don't we make money off of our premiums in our state? So it would go into a dedicated fund. And, you know, the estimates are that it would probably be, and I'm thinking, you know, nine billion dollars at one percent interest. Think about the revenue that would be generated with that. That could help rural communities invest in needed infrastructure that they, that they desperately need. And you don't have the resources in your county to pay for that. So, um, so that's another piece that has to be carefully thought out is this fund, which will have a lot of money. And who's going to administer it? How is it going to be, you know, invested? Um, all, you see, that you can see that there's a lot of complicated pieces. And it's going to be, uh, and I, I've traveled around the state. There's so many smart, wonderful people in this state. And I think we're going to be a model for this. In fact, I got a call from a representative, uh, he was the minority leader in Arizona in the state house and the minority Democrat. Um, and he said he had heard about this, our bill and wanted to know more about it. And, uh, he was so excited. He said, I want to introduce that bill in Arizona. Um, so I, I, you know, um, I think that, um, you know, I'm, I'm not ambitious about the other states. I'm concerned about our state and the lack of access and we need doctors and we, and our hospitals are in trouble. Let's, you know, try and fix this. There are inner measures that can be done this session and next session, but this is a three-year long-term strategy that will really, um, is a great investment and there is.
I look forward to, I look forward to learning more about it. It sounds very interesting. It sounds very beneficial to the state.
Uh, well, I'll find out what, um, uh, Barbara Casey gave to you in the packet. But let me see, and then I'll give you some, maybe some interesting stuff. And we have a website, Commissioner. Um, that you can go to, it's nmhealthsecurity.org. NM Health Security, and it has a lot of information on it. And you could get the copy of the bill and the table of contents and the index. That's two thousand nineteen already. I've collected potential changes. That's the Health Security Act, not what's going to be introduced. Um, and I think in the process of, um, figuring out how we're going to do this and, um, is going to be very exciting because as Representative, um, Armstrong said, will they come up with ideas that the Health Security Act never thought of? You know, so, you know, that's the, but it is, it's a real exciting opportunity for us to take control of this nightmare situation.
Sounds exciting.
I, I'd like to say thank you to Pat Leham and Mary Philbin for your presentation today here. I, I believe that we will be tabling this item because we do not have the proper documentation. So, uh, do I have a motion to table?
Motion to table, Madam Chair.
Motion to table. Nahar, second by Commissioner Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you again.
You're gracias.
Gracias. We move on to item number two, COVID update presenter Leo Miestas, emergency manager.
Madam, Madam Chair, Leo's not with us today, so, uh, Fire Chief Andrew Duran will present on his behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Dr. Martinez. Give you a little bit of information of what's been happening over the last week or so. In the last week, we've seen a total of ninety-two cases in San Miguel County. Um, we have a total right now of five hundred and twelve cases, um, as you, uh, maybe aware we have two deaths.
Mister Fire Chief, it's a little bit difficult to hear you. Can you speak a little louder, please?
It's, we'll try it out again. Can you hear me better now?
A little bit.
Okay, let's, let's see. We have, uh, right now we have a total of five hundred and twelve cases in San Miguel County, um, two deaths. Um, we've had, uh, in the last week, we've seen a, uh, increase of ninety-two cases. Uh, we, to date, we've tested in San Miguel County twenty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-two tests. So, I mean, we're, we're conducting a lot of testing in San Miguel County. But as, as we see it, our numbers have, have continued to go up steadily. In, in New Mexico, we have, uh, nine hundred and thirty-five cases in, in the hospital currently. Um, the, the governor did sign a, an executive order which allows healthcare industry to, uh, to be ready for a potential move to crisis care. And what crisis care, uh, means is, is hospitals, uh, working in that setting would force doctors to compare patients with others and make the decision, make the decision based on who is most likely to survive. So that's kind of the, the position New Mexico is in right now. Um, and under the, uh, under that crisis care act as well, uh, doctors who normally don't practice, say in the emergency setting, um, would be allowed to, to move to that setting and assist doctors and work under a doctor in, in that type of setting. So doctors that normally don't, don't perform emergency medicine in, in the hospital setting would be allowed to do that. On a, on a positive note, the UK began vaccinations today. They did issue their first vaccines, uh, this morning. They, they are prepared to, uh, to vaccinate, uh, four hundred thousand people with their, with the amount of vaccines they currently have. Um, and if, and if it's approved in the US, New Mexico is expected to receive vaccines by the end of the month. While that would New Mexico be the first in the US to receive the vaccine. And what they're preparing for is to vacc, vaccinate eight, eight thousand seven hundred and fifty healthcare workers. And so we, those will be the first, uh, round of vaccines going out in New Mexico.
So Fire Chief Duran, with all that being said, where does that leave us in the red, yellow, green? Are we still in the yellow or have we moved since?
We're still, we're still in the, uh, yellow. That data is, it will be produced every other week. So next week, the new numbers will, will, will come out for that particular formula, looking at, at the numbers and looking at a formula that I've, that I've seen distributed. It seems like we will continue to stay in the yellow. Um, if I understand the formula they're using correctly, um, it looks like if, as long as we're not going over thirty-one cases per day, we would stay in the yellow. As long as our, 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 we don't exceed that five percent, um, per, per day of, of the eight per hundred thousand people.
And I'm not sure if Sheriff Lopez is on, on with us today. Is he? Is there anybody from his department? Manager Martinez?
Let me see if he's, uh, attending.
I, I don't believe that he's here. As a matter of fact, I spoke to him a couple of days ago. I believe he's hunting.
Okay, okay. I just had a question in reference to, you know, if we've given any citations to any individuals. How's, how's that been taking part in, you know, for the county? Have we had to have, have we had to cite anybody or we have, we had any, anything related to the COVID? Individuals not following what's set forth for them to follow?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, it's my understanding and, and conversations, uh, with, with the sheriff is they themselves have not issued any citations. They have received complaints and when they go address them, they, they, um, people are compliant when they address the issue. Um, and also state police, there is a hotline and a, and a email reporting system to report either businesses or events that aren't in compliance. And I believe state police in our area have, if I, maybe, I hope I'm correct, but I don't believe they've issued citations within San Miguel County either. Uh, they go in and, and proceed to the complaints and, and try and address them by correcting the, the deficiency.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Duran?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Chief Duran, uh, you touched on this a little bit, but that's the formula. That was my question since we have, was it five hundred and twelve cases today in Pecos? We had seventy-six cases and the numbers continue to rise in the rural areas around, um, you know, rural Pecos, Hillfield, all these areas. And I was really surprised that we were in yellow. It's good news. I'm happy for that. And yesterday there was a rumor in town here in Pecos that we were going to go to green. Uh, someone said that was in, um, KOB, but I never saw anything about that. But anyway, and you did answer a question about the, um, when, with the period, I had asked her an email and Owen responded. So what the period is for reassessing where we, the status of the yellow, green, red. So you did say next week that'll be reassessed and that's how it goes across the state because it was, you know, so anyway, so is it five percent of the population or five percent of the tests?
Movements of the population, it's, it's eight, eight, as long as it's, the, the case count cannot exceed eight per hundred thousand. So, um, you know, just rounding it off, estimating our, our population is about a quarter of the hundred thousand. So, uh, you multiply the eight times four and, and the number that I saw was thirty-one point two five. So I believe if, uh, as long as we don't exceed the thirty-one point two five per day average, uh, we would stay in yellow. And, and I haven't seen the formula, what would take us to green.
Yeah, it's interesting because you look at a neighboring county, Harding County, for example, had the total of six cases. So I don't know what their population of the county is, but you know, comparing it to, you see a low number of cases and I know they have a low number population, but it is interesting that we're the only one in yellow and that's good news for our businesses and hopefully people won't, um, uh, slack and, uh, and, you know, spread it. But anyway, so that did explain that piece that I was curious about.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody have any, any further questions? Okay, we'll move on to item number three, contract with JJ Consulting. Presenter, Mr. Vidal Martinez, manager.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. I'm having some internet problems. Okay, so, um, after having a discussion with staff, um, I made the decision that it would be in the best interest of the county to procure services to consult and manage the CDBG grant. Again, this is a, a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for the Country Acres subdivision. So what I did is, um, I, I submitted to the optic on our website for anyone that would be interested in providing this service to the county. Um, I did receive one, one bid. And what, what I'm looking at is to hire someone and pay that individual or the company thirty thousand dollars to manage and consult the, the CDB grant. Now this would be for a total of two years. I hope that we don't extend it two years. I'm, I'm hoping that we can complete this project in one year. But this would be a contract with JJ Consulting for a total of two years. Again, I hope that, uh, this would be a one-year project. So this company would actually manage and consult to make, and from the beginning to the end to complete the, the project. So, um, at this time, I'm requesting commission approval to contract with, um, JJ Consulting. But at this time, if there's any questions, um, from the commission, I'll be willing to answer whatever questions you have.
Commission, is there any question?
Madam Chair, I have some questions.
Commissioner Varela?
Uh, yes, you said you put this out for RFP and you got one, uh, bid. Are you satisfied that this is the best, um, for this? And what first, my big first question was, is do we have to contract out? Do we not have staff that can manage this grant? And, uh, and I think that answer, I think you kind of briefly explained that your, your staff, um, in the county decided that you don't have it, the staff to manage it. That's where you're going for this. Is this cost going to be, come out of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars CDBG or it's on top of that?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, uh, thank you, Commissioner, for the, for the questions. Now, it's interesting when we, when we procured this position, we're looking for someone with specific expertise, someone that has worked with federal grants, someone has, who has worked with CDBG grants. And, um, unfortunately, we didn't, we did not get all the, we didn't get, we only got one applicant. And for the record, let me just state that that applicant was Mr. Alex DeFoya. He is, he is the president of the JJ Consulting LLC. So yes, yes, we did, we did advertise it and, uh, we only got one. Now I want to make it clear that this is for, to manage the grant. I did get a couple of, of phone calls from, from construction companies. I said, no, that's, it's not to, it's not about the seven hundred and fifty thousand. But the thirty thousand would, would not come out of the seven hundred and fifty. That would come out of the general fund.
Do we have the money in the general fund, given our budget and, uh, where we are currently?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, uh, yes, ma'am.
Oh, so it's Alex DeFoya as JJ. Boy, that guy is a master of disguise. I didn't know. Well, that makes me feel better that it's a local and the local is Alex because I have confidence in him. I was concerned, uh, I have no idea who JJ is and if it's from out of town or even out of state consultants is. And we talked about hiring locals wherever we can and, um, knowing that, anyway, so those are my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Nahar?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm also glad that, uh, that Alex, if anybody's an expert in this field, it's Alex DeFoya. So having said that, I make a motion that we approve the contract with JJ Consulting LLC.
Motion by Commissioner Nahar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to item number four, recommendation to approve the job descriptions for the detention lobby and visitation officer, detention officer for the San Miguel County Detention. We move on to item number four, recommendation to approve the job descriptions for the detention lobby and visitation officer, detention officer for the San Miguel County Detention Center. Ms. Eileen Sadio, Human Resource Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Um so this job description is basically a revision. It is not a new position. Um the individual that currently serves in this capacity will be retiring at the end of this month. So it was a perfect opportunity for Warden Elwell to revise this job description. We are moving in that direction to revise these job descriptions to, especially in the detention center. So. People really have an idea of the responsibilities that they will be taking on. Uh within these positions. So if you notice that um there's quite a bit of detail in this job description. And so this position under the direction of the warden, deputy warden, lieutenant and sergeant. Uh will be responsible for the security and control of the front entrance of the facility and um at the detention center. So at this time, if there's any questions, um otherwise, I am asking for approval on this job description.
Commission, is there any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Varela, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to item number five, resolution to establish solid waste management services and fees. Except exemption of presenter Gerald Garcia, San Miguel County Public Works Director. Mr. Gerald Garcia, are you on?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, you could probably see my screen. I don't have video, I don't think. Let me see. Oh yeah, here we go. All right. Can you see me now?
Yes.
Okay, so um yes, uh good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Um thank you for having me on. Um yes, we're gonna provide um. Basically on number five, it's a resolution establishing the solid waste management services and fees. Exemptions assessing and imposing in San Miguel County as allowed by the San Miguel County ordinance. Uh you should have in front of you um a, a proposed resolution that outlines. All the exemptions and, and rates um that are presented. Some of them are current. In existing in our own or, ordinance and our consultant can then go through all these. And but it is a four-page document. Along with that four-page document in the bottom is the signature page for the county commissioners. And so we, we seek approval from the county commission um to, so we can move forward um on this. I mean, I have hired, as of yesterday, we hired our two clerks. They'll be implementing a lot of the software, the new software, and I've been working with them the last couple of days. And uh Mr. Launbowski can give you any additional information that you might have or question.
Commission, is there any question?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yeah, uh Joe, uh this is Harold. I have a question with regards to the rates that you're, you're proposing. Will that give us a um? Will that, will that balance our budget? Because I know that you said that at the last meeting that there's a lot, a lot of unknown accounts. And the two people that we're hiring are going to be taking care of that. How can we be assured of that? Because you know, our, our goal is to not subsidize a solid waste budget with the general fund. Is that going to meet our goal? Because if it doesn't meet it. I, I would want to make sure that we change it so that it does meet the goal.
And uh Madam Chair and Commissioners, uh basically the rates that are in this rate resolution, as we'd already promised you at the last, uh last presentations. Uh we didn't change your rate. The salt, the rates you see in here are the same rates. That the citizens are receiving currently. No matter if they go to the convenience station, roll-off services, commercial services. Senior rates, vacant rates, all that. This resolution basically reflects what you already have in place. So. As we said at the last couple of meetings, there is no rate increase here. The, the, the public itself is not gonna feel and see any change in their bill. Uh maybe the method of the bill, what the bill looks like because of the new billing system. Now, the goal here is to again, get this operating totally in the black. It's the only age, uh department you have that actually can support itself. Uh out of all the departments you have, this definitely is the one. The steps here, as outlined on the, the timeline and everything else that we provided, is first. Get, now first step which is complete is the ordinance, which we did. We were, and in that ordinance, we simplified it from twenty-six pages down to eleven or thirteen, whatever it is now. Then we moved the service and rate. Out of the ordinance, it just says in the ordinance that you will pass services and rates by resolution, which we all know is a simpler method. For a county commission to be able to make adjustments as needed and when they need to make those adjustments. Still done, public hearing, still on the agenda, still requires approval. So you're not, it's not anything. You just don't have to go through that whole ordinance process. Okay, the, what's gonna happen here is we're already in the process of moving those accounts into the new software. We'll get those moved in. At the same time we're doing that, we'll recertify everybody to ensure that they still meet the guidelines. If it's a vacant exempt, a seasonal event. Uh the, the senior rate and so on, we'll certify all those. At the same time, we'll be looking at all the people that are delinquent. Taking some actions with those to try to convince them to start paying at least the current amount. And over time, any delinquent amounts that they have. At the same time, uh from the assessor's records, uh I thought there was only a lot about nine thousand accounts difference. There's actually eleven thousand accounts and you're only billing about four thousand five hundred accounts. There's, there's basically seven thousand accounts that, when they are in status of called inactive. Inactive means they're not receiving any bill. Now, as we discussed, some of those are gonna be legit. Some of those inactives, these all fall within the assessor's. Uh report that all have dwellings of some sort on that property. They're not vacant land, they're not grazing land, they're not, you know, anything of that nature. They are what they consider residential properties with an improvement on them. There's eleven thousand of those. You've only got four, four and a half thousand, less than four and a half thousand people in your billing right now. So there's a huge amount and as we discussed, how many times have you heard, well, I'm paying, but my neighbor's not, you know, so what I, why should I pay? That's those people we're looking for, that neighbor that's not paying. So out of that eleven, seven thousand accounts. A lot of them are not, they're gonna be legit. There shouldn't be a bill for them. But we'll be reviewing all those accounts and going through them. In fact, the way it happens is we basically set them up in the system. Uh send them notice that you are going to be billed for solid waste based upon the records we have. If you do not, if you qualify as for one of the exemptions. Uninhabitable and so on, then you must complete this form or resubmit it so we can remove you from the billing. If not, you will be billed for certain, for the system. And again, a lot of these houses may be uninhabitable. They may have burned down. They may not be livable. Uh they could be a chicken coop now or a storage shed. Could have been a mobile home that was moved out of the county a long time ago. But it also could be a house that was uninhabitable. Two years ago, but somebody went in there and renovated it and they're living in it today and you don't know. You don't know and they're not getting billed. And that's, and I, and I can guarantee out of seven thousand accounts, we're shooting for fifteen hundred to two thousand new accounts, Commissioner Garcia. That's missing and work on those delinquent people to get them more participating in paying. Between those two events with no rate increase to the citizens. That's where we're gonna really focus our efforts over the next four to six months to increase the revenues drastically in those areas. And then we bring a report back to you as the commission. Stating by, by May, April, your budget time period for review in June, final review in June. Saying this is how, what we've done, this is what's worked, this is how many new accounts we've added, this is what we've done to get there. And then what now we have. All this money coming in from all these accounts, we should have been getting in the first place. Then whatever, then we compare that to the operating budget. And if we're slightly short, we might have to do a twenty, twenty-five cents a household increase. We might have to do a fifty cent. We might not have to do anything. You might actually go into the black and you should with. Uh with us just doing the work of searching these people down. Because I can guarantee you, there's been no research and the communication with the assessor's office and the billing system. There's been problems there, but all these problems are being repaired and both, both, all the departments, the treasures are, treasures depart. Uh office, the assessor's office, the billing, it's all coming together where you'll have good communication. So when I do, like I said. What happens is you have people that sell the house too. The deed gets to the assessor's office, but that information's not getting, not all the time getting to the solid waste billing. So the person that sold it, who's in your billing is long gone, no longer paying. The new person living in the house has never got a bill because we didn't know they were there. So the, the new system goes in place will alleviate that lack of communication. So to answer your question, Mr. Garcia, Commissioner Garcia. It will have an impact over the next six months to bring us into the black without doing a rate increase. Uh and I advised you upfront, we don't want to do a rate increase because until everybody's fairly being treated fairly and everybody's participating equally. It's not right, I wouldn't recommend doing a rate increase on only, only the people that happen to be doing the right thing in the first place. So uh yes, we will see an increase everywhere we've done this. We've added accounts. And in your case, out of the seven thousand, I'm shooting for fifteen hundred to two thousand. New accounts that will go in. When I say new, new to us, that they're in the system. And then also the about a thousand accounts that are delinquent that are not really. They're in your billing system, but they're not paying. We're going to deal with those individuals too to get them paid. All that will generate revenues and get us up to a certain point and then as the commission in June will make the decision. Is that enough or does it require a rate increase or a rate adjustment of some sort?
Okay, one more question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
Thanks Joe, that's, that's very informative. The, the rate increase, the annual rate increase is based on the consumer price index. Um we were informed at the last meeting that we haven't had a rate increase like for four years, for whatever reason. Uh it was, it was an oversight by staff. Uh so we have had an increase because uh the CPI wasn't taken into consideration. But it says that it'll, it'll be, it'll increase annually. Are you talking about calendar year or fiscal year? And, and, and if that, and, and then who? You probably can't answer that question, Joe, but um the county manager or maybe Gerald can answer the question. Who's going to be overseeing to make sure that, that we comply with the increase so that we don't ignore it the way that it's been ignored the last four years?
Uh quickly, uh Commissioners, if I can, let me answer the first part, which is. What, is it a calendar year or a fiscal year? Because you operate on a physical year budget, you should, that rate increase should be based upon the fiscal year. So any CPI change would be July one for the next year and each time you do that. As far as the past, the other ones. Yeah, I'm not sure what you want to do on that, but normally. It, your, your budget is a physical, but uh fiscal year budget, so your rate adjustment should be based upon that, not calendar. Um and as far as how to make sure it's gonna be there, it should just be one of those. Markoff items in your budget review process. When you're doing your budgets in April, May and June, that it's. Automatically that this is gonna occur. In fact, staff and, and the manager and the, and the finance. When they submit the budget to the next commission and, you know, the preliminary budget in May or April, whatever. Uh it should already factor in that CPI increase. And when they approve your final budget in July, it should already have that. It should almost be routinely, as you, as you said, Commissioner Garcia. And most counties and municipalities throughout the state have adopted that same procedure to ensure they don't get behind and have to play a big catch-up. So it should be, really, it's a piece of that budget process that you guys go through at a budget time every year.
Okay, do we have any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Nahar, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to item number six, resolution of extension of El Camino and Riverwalk pedestrian and bicycle trail. Come presenter Gerald Garcia.
Yes, uh good afternoon again, uh Commissioner, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Um number six, um the San Miguel County Public Works is currently in construction. Uh phase of the El Camino and Riverwalk pedestrian and bicycle, uh bicycle trails. Uh construction has started. If you've been back there, it looks very good. And uh, and because we've had some weather delays and stuff like that, we're asking for um. An additional, uh well, for LGR, because there's three-part funding to this particular project. We're just asking some additional time to close out all the projects of uh LGRS are typically. Um by the end of this month, but we're gonna move forward and if we could just have an extension. Uh probably along with just construction and then uh the funding for the LGRF. And I'm seeking approval for that. Uh you should have a resolution in front of you as part of your packet.
This is for.
Asking that and then, and then I have a, a signature page as well.
This is for.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know if any of you, I think Commissioner Garcia, you've been out to the Camino, uh El Camino. Uh and I think as of next week, they're also gonna be doing the, the payment for the Riverwalk. Uh the project is progressing very nicely, very nice.
Uh Mr. Garcia, if we look at item number six, it says for information purpose only. So there's approval or anything for?
Okay, no, okay. All right, well. Thought I had it in as a, for approval, but okay, that's fine. But we could talk about it if there's any questions and then it'll be as part of the, um it'll be part of an action item for next, next month, if you will.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Garcia?
If that's the case, we're not gonna have a commission meeting until next, next calendar year. So if this expires July, December thirty-first. Then us taking action in January isn't gonna do us any good. But you're right. So it's not an action item.
Yeah, Commissioner Garcia, we don't have the documentation in front of us to support it, so we can't make a decision based on, on information purposes only. I don't feel comfortable making a decision, but the rest of you.
A resolution would have provided the information for, just the extension for the LGR for that purposes, but I will, I will, uh. I will call DOT and be advised and see what will be the next processes.
Okay, thank you. So we move on to item number seven, Public Works Division Report for the month of November twenty twenty, Mr. Arnold Lopez. Mr. Lopez? Mr. Garcia, can you get Mr. Lopez on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
There it is, okay. Just having an issue here. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So I'm here for, for the month of uh November. So um you know, as you have in front of you, all the different areas that we have addressed. And I'm just gonna go through and not let you know where we're currently and what we're doing. Um so currently I got Johnny Trujillo over in um Park Springs Ranch Road. He completed the maintenance on that road today, which is out there by Tecolotito. And then he went into Tecolotito as well and, and graded our short county roads within that area. Peter V. Hill is currently in Gonzalez Ranch area and we're applying base course in an area kind of by Johnny Senna's area. We've applied, you know, quite a few loads there and we continue to apply. Uh bad portion of road which was uh had severe washboarding. Going on in that area due to a lack of good material on the road. So we're addressing that. Our other grader Juan Macias is in uh San Rafael currently on the road over to the Scientology. And County Road C fifty-six, addressing just general maintenance there. On the crew, we started a big thinning project in A three and going to Las Dispensas. We got roadside uh that's overgrown with, with junipers and pine trees as well. We got roadside, uh, that's overgrown with, with junipers and, uh, pine trees as well. Um, uh, creating hazard not only to the traveling public, but also to our school bus that. That runs that route, you know, when they do start running, um, but, um, it's, it's a good project that, that we're continuing working on. And, uh, basically, uh, as far as our projects, our El Camino project is all paved. We're currently installing. Guard rail on that project. Um, all we lack is going to be the striping. And, and also the signage. So we should have that project completed hopefully in a week and have it reopened to the public. Um, the other portion, which is in the city's portion, the Riverwalk, they are paving today. Um, they will be paving today and tomorrow, and that paving project should be complete. All we'll lack there is, is the striping and the signage as well. So that federal project, which was a tap project that we went out jointly with the city of Las Vegas. Should be complete. Um, we might have to go into a winter suspension, just pending the seeding on that particular project. And, um, La Teua, uh, we have a, a con- uh, con- concrete structure. That was compromised, mostly the, the pipe. We thought we were going to be able to address it with just a repair. Um, once we exposed the pipe, the contractor exposed the pipe and, uh. We found additional corrosion occurring in that pipe. So it was deemed, uh, unsuitable. Um, so we had to go back and, uh, additional budget was created. And, uh, we addressed that as an entire reconstruction. So we, we're going to have new pipe, uh, new concrete, uh, slope blankets and a concrete deck. It'll be a real nice improvement for that area as well. We visited with, uh, Berlin Miller in Pecos, our engineer on the design of the low water crossing. Over in East Pecos, uh, we made decisions, uh, gave, uh, engineer direction as to. To which approach we're going to take on that. Um, we're going to do also a concrete pipe structure. Um, skew angle was a problem. Um, we made decisions and, and adjusted the skew. To meet our needs and, and cost also. So that project will be, uh, ready, shovel ready, basically, in a short amount of time. He's going to finish the final design on it. And then, uh, when other funding opportunities become available, we can take advantage of something. And hopefully, you know, be able to, uh, construct that project in the near future. Um, I know LGRFs, um, have been approved, uh, also. Uh, Berlin submitted a task order on the chip seal in the San Isidro area road. Um, we have two LGRFs dedicated to that, so that'll be, um, in design. And then we'll go out to bid early in the spring. Also included with the third, uh, LGRF will be in the Chapelle area, also a chip seal project. We will basically, um. Uh, have it engineered as well. We'll go out to bid early in the spring and that Chapelle area road will also be chip sealed. Um, utilizing LGRF, uh, through, through DOT. Those are some upcoming projects and, uh, if you have any other questions or questions, I'll stand for that now.
Um, I have a, I have a question. However, I believe this is for Mr. Garcia, Arnold. Miss, is Mr. Garcia still on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, last meeting, I, I brought to the attention of. The lighting for the Bernal and Romero, Romero Villarria. However, that still has not been addressed. I want to know what the holdup is in that area. Um, that is a health, a, a safety issue for my people. I travel that road every day and every day since our meeting, I have not seen it being addressed in Bernal and Romero. Where are we at with that and what is the holdup?
So I have submitted, uh, Arnold obtained a quote from me. Uh, for those lights, I have submitted it to the county manager and, and, uh, he, um. It was given to county manager and I believe finance and I'd been advised at that time, I'm just kind of waiting on some direction. Where exactly the funding is going to come from? I wasn't sure if it was coming out of general fund because the quote is around twenty-five thousand dollars. And so I'm just waiting to be advised. I turned that in last month or a month before or so for that.
Okay, so maybe the question is for the manager. Where are we at with that, uh, getting addressed, Mr. Manager, as that is a safety issue for the people that are traveling that? Those areas every day. Um, where are we at with it and why has it not been addressed? I was told last meeting that it was going to get addressed, yet it's not been done.
Um, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'll follow up with Melinda and see where we're at with it.
Okay, thank you. I have another question in reference to, for Mr. Garcia, in reference to the bridge for, uh, San Jeronimo. Where are we at in that area?
Are you talking about the?
The San Jeronimo?
The Teco Lotte Bridge?
No, San Jeronimo Bridge. Mr. Lopez, uh, if you're on, can you? We were going to do some.
So, um, so Madam Chair, if, if I may, uh, so are we talking about the bridge that did not get approved the last time?
It's the San Jeronimo Bridge. It was my understanding that bridge was going to be repaired as well. However, nothing has been done for that bridge either. So, um. There was some work that was going to be.
So I do not have that particular, I don't have that particular bridge on my board as a project order or a task order. Um, um, maybe, uh, Arnold Lopez can help me out with that one. I, I don't have that as part of one of our projects.
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, finally, some heavy difficulties here. I apologize about that. So, so, um, for, for information, um, on, for both of you, um, the Teco Lotte Bridge is the San Jeronimo Bridge. So it is in the Teco Lotte Creek. So a lot of people call it the Teco Lotte Bridge because it is in the Teco Lotte Creek and it is in the San Jeronimo area. So yes, ma'am, it is the same bridge. So, um, just earlier, uh, our engineer Berlin Miller sent out an email, um, to us. And, um, he, it looked like it's going to go out to bid on the, let me look here real quick. Um, it advertises for rebid on January fifteenth. So, so that will be going out to bid. Um, we revisited it and decided that, um, we're going to have to, um. As, uh, not, not let it out as a full construction. Basically, it's going to be let out as a bridge repair. Okay, so that should bring the project within budget. So, um, moving forward with that, um. If we go out to bid on the fifteenth, hopefully we could award it, you know, in the February meeting. Um, keep our fingers crossed that we do get some, some bids on it and hopefully we could award it on the, in the February meeting. If so, it'd take about a month, basically, to finalize paperwork. And hopefully hit construction in, in March, you know, mid-March, hopefully, um, if all goes well.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Nahad.
Uh, just Arnold, I'd, I'd like to thank you for, uh, for the last four years. Every time that I called you, you were real responsive to the needs of my constituents. And I thank you for that. You've been responsive. You've been, you've been excellent to work with and, and, and again, I want to thank you for, for what you've done for my, for District Five.
Likewise, thank you, Mr. Nahad and also, uh, Commissioner, um, Madam Chair Martinez. I thank you both for your support, you know, during your, your time as, as commissioners. It's, it's been work for you all and for Samigil. Thank you for what you do for the county.
Commissioner Varela.
Thank you, uh, Chair, Chair Martinez. Uh, Arnold and Gerald, I have some questions for you. Arnold, first off. You're breaking up a little bit when you were talking about Berlin Miller Pecos and design. I think you were talking about that low water crossing. Design that we've been waiting on. Is that what you were talking about?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes. And I know before COVID, we talked about having a meeting with the, uh, community. Uh, there in East Pecos to go over some different design. But, uh, the most important point on this, um, design, and I've made it a few times, the, the point is that, uh. East Pecos Water Users Association is in the process of, well, they're getting the funding now. They will be installing a sewer line down, uh, will be parallel, maybe within the road easement. So it's really important that we talk to, um. The east, someone from East Pecos Water Users Association. I believe it could be Robert Baca. There's a few people involved there, but. You could direct Berlin Miller, if you need my help, uh, directing you to the right person. Because there, there's no sense in going through all this, um. Expensive design if it's going to be affected by, um, this other project and we could maybe work together and. And, uh, and share some costs, so we won't have to, uh, you know, have to tear it up after we. You don't want to put it in, have them come in and put in their sewer line and tear up our road. In other words, that's a, that's a risk. So we need to take care of that. And, uh, so anyway, that's exciting that that's being addressed because, um. Uh, that is, uh, uh, you know, another public safety issue as we've talked about with the flooding and people not being able to get in or out, out through there. And, um, another thing is the materials for Colonias and Cow Creek. Are you going to be able to get more material up there to finish the, uh? The work that you've been doing there?
Yes, ma'am. As, 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 um, time goes on, yes, we will continue to apply material there. Um, currently, I stated earlier, we are in, in one of your district roads.
In Gonzalez, yes, thank you for that. Yeah, speaking of which, uh, on the other side of Gonzalez, La Sacatosa. Uh, we've had requests to get some material to that area for quite some time. So if you could put that on your list too, I'd appreciate it.
Sure thing. And then going back to the low water crossing in East Pecos. So I have been in, uh, communication with Robert Baca. So my approach is going to be as soon as we reach a hundred percent final design on that project. We will submit a copy to the Pecos, um, you know, association there. And then they will forward that to the engineer that's going to design their, their water or their system that they're going to be installing. And that way they could, you know, have that design and they could design theirs according.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate you as always and you're on top of it. And I have a question for yourself, but it's mainly for, um, for the director, for, uh, Mr. Garcia. And, uh, it's regarding that, um, fence that someone put up on Hoya del Padre. It is a public. It's a hazard and I don't know how we let it go this far. Two months ago, I let you know, I was getting a lot of complaints from constituents. They called. The manager's office and your office directly, and I believe that it was taken care of. I recently, we down, went down that road. And it is not taking care of this fence that is installed, not on the easement of the road, on the road itself, three feet into the county road. And there are these giant metal, uh. Steel posts there. One is in a corner and it is a public hazard and someone's going to get hurt or killed there. And I don't know how that was allowed and I'd like to hear about this, how we, how that was allowed and how, um. How could the county allow this kind of a hazardous project to, uh, happen on our road?
So, uh, Madam Chair, uh, Commissioners, Commissioner Varela, so. So I was, went back and looked at my notes for that particular project or situation and I looked back that. Um, and I was working with Robert Archuleta, our planning zoning director, and I brought it to his attention. He did give me some survey plaits. And I did meet with that resident of that and in that particular fence, that pulled fence is in the property line of that resident. Um, the, the, the road. The road is literally, and if you will, encroaching on his property. Um, and according to ordinance or statute, we do not have any ordinance in that particular area. That would allow for county road maintenance or utilities that would help satisfy, uh, the right of way into something. Um, and then, and I don't know this and maybe Arnold might, but there is some kind of guideline that sometimes that allows for fifteen to twenty foot right of way. Uh, for, for, uh, road maintenance or utilities. But that fence fall according to the plat and I would have, I got a copy of that and, and Robert Archuleta provided me one. And he, in his email to me as well, also shows that, 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 that pulled fence is in the property owners. If it's something, if it's the wishes of the commission to try to change that ordinance or. Or, or see different direction to have that changed. Um, then, then that needs to be brought and talked about within the commission. If you'd like to see some kind of immediate, immediate, uh, change with that fence, with that resident. I think at this point, uh, it would probably be a legal issue and maybe legal counsel would have to step in and, and file suit. Uh, because it is, it's pretty much complete. It's been there. Uh, I have met with area residents of that particular, uh, situation. I met with the resident of that, of that fence and, and there's really, to my knowledge, there's not any violation. That, I mean, is, is it really impacting our road? Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
But, and I could definitely see your point. It could be a liability issue, somebody hitting it and so forth. But that fence, according, I looked at, I even took pictures of all where the stakes are for his property line. Um, and that was the residence concern. He felt that the road is, is encroaching on his property. So I addressed it, uh, to the very best I possibly could and, and with guidance also through Robert Archuleta and planning zoning. We don't issue fence permits for anything like that, but.
I, I hear you. And thank you for, for looking into this, but I think that there's a huge problem. And if it's a problem with our ordinance, we have to fix this because it's a matter of public safety and somebody's going to get killed. He took two lanes into two one. So, and I'm sure that this isn't the first time that we've had this issue. We've heard this in other areas, two in other districts where we have, uh, the same situation. Somebody comes and puts a fence in. On their, on their property and it encroaches, it's on the road and they say, no, your road's on my line. Well, we have to fix that with the ordinance because it's not, I'll compare this to another situation. I got a call from a constituent. He called planning and zoning to ask for a permit to, um, put up one of those, um. It's like a garage, but it's a steel, you know, pre-made thing. And, uh, he was denied his permit because on his, it was going to go into his property on his fence. He wasn't going to change the easement, the right of way or change the fence. It would have gone in his property on his fence and he said, there's an ordinance there. It's when Alex was there, told him that. He could not, that could not go within twenty feet of the, the right of way. So that's even on his own property. So I'm comparing that to this because that's his own property. It was not going to affect the right of way and not affect the road itself. This is on his property, this road, this fence this guy put up. So I don't know if this ordinance is interpreted different ways or if we're missing an ordinance, we got to get on it and fix this pronto. As a matter of, we need for this guy, we need to look into that. First of all, maybe legal can help look into that with our planning and zoning. Because we should have something there. If we're not allowing an individual to put up a carport in their own property in the fence line and not affect a road. But yet somebody can go and put a fence on the county road. There's something very wrong with that. So I would implore our, um, attorney to look into this with our public, oh, with our planning and zoning and public works. And investigate and see if there is something on the books that prevents this from happening. And if there's not, this is a priority for the next, uh, upcoming year and the early meetings as we can. To get started and get this, this fixed, but I think that there might be something there. And absent of an ordinance, I imagine there would be something in the state requirements or with roads and public safety. That would not allow an individual to put a fence on a public road, a county road.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Um, I, I agree with Commissioner Varela on this and I think we should engage, uh, Counselor Romero. Um, and, and get his opinion on this. There's many places in our county where, um, public roads or county roads traverse private land. And no, no private landholder should be able to impede or, or block a public roadway. I, I'm, I'm sure that there's something in statute, um, maybe not county ordinance, but state statute. That says that, you know, and no resident in, by, by no means should be able to, uh, impede. Uh, a public roadway or a county roadway. Um, you know, he, he can put the fence on, on, you know, in a reasonable amount of, of space. Uh, between his property and the, and the road, but he should by no means be able to. Just impede or change the course of a, of a public roadway, a county roadway. Uh, I would strongly suggest, uh, Attorney Romero, um, uh, get engaged in this one because that. This is a dangerous situation and ultimately the county can be held liable if somebody gets hurt there because we allowed it. And, and I, I think we, we need to put some attention onto this pretty, pretty quickly.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Garcia.
You know, I, uh, I received a, a request from Commissioner Varela yesterday to go look at it. And so I went, I, I went and I looked at it and it, it's. Even though Commissioner Varela is being very lenient about it. Three feet onto the driving surface is what the fence is. But onto the right of way, you're looking at almost probably fifteen feet onto the right of way. Um, you know, we've been, we've been talking about roads for the past, uh, year. Prescriptive easement, prescriptive easement gives. Prescriptive easement, prescriptive easement gives the county the right prescriptively based on, on the history of that road. So at a minimum by prescriptive right, I think that this fence should not have been allowed to be built. And then the state statutes also allows, if I'm not mistaken, and Dave, Dave Romero is here, by, by, by state statutes, I think we're allowed up to sixty feet right of way from the center line of the road or from the center line of the right of way. You know, so all of that should have been taken into account before saying yes to the install of this fence. Because now we have a property owner that has incurred a big cost to building this fence. And he consulted with county staff to make sure that he was in compliance. County staff allowed him to do it. So you're right, you know, it makes us liable. And based on what I saw out there yesterday, it's not a matter of, of, is it going to happen? It's, it's a matter of when is it going to happen? You could have somebody driving five miles an hour there and they're probably gonna hit that fence. And, and it's gonna be a liability on our part, you know, so, um, it's, it's unfortunate that, that, that this type of, this type of work is going on. It's very unfortunate because it's putting us, the commission, in a crunch with the constituents and it's putting the landowner in a crunch with the commissioner, in this case with Commissioner Varela. You know, I, I, I'll have to sit on this one as well because if this, if this landowner is going to be upset, then they better be upset with me too. Because that fence is definitely a danger right now to the public.
Well. Thank you, my fellow commissioners.
I, I'm also in agreement with this. And, and I, the question that I have is what public, what employee of the county gave the permission for this fence to be built? Who allowed it to happen? And what documentation do you have to support that it was okay to have it happen? To have that fence built? And what liability is the county facing if somebody does get in a car accident there? We need to address this and I think it needs to be addressed immediately. Um, before, to prevent, to be preventive of an accident occurring and somebody getting killed or hurt.
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Varela. Um, so the, when I was notified, the fence was already up, the poles were already erected. The, the, the resident never sought out any kind of, uh, approval from the county until the poles were already up. When I got notified, the poles were already erected. Um, and already put with concrete. That was done. And so in the resident's eyes, he felt he didn't need approval because it was on his, in the inside of his property line. He never sought approval. So no county employee gave or didn't not give approval because it was never asked. The resident did it on his own. And that's when I started bringing to the attention of other, uh, approvals for permitting and so forth to make sure, is this okay? I, we worked on it and the direction I got was that it's in his property line. We're not gonna tell him to take it off. So I did not.
Well, I have a, my, my other concern is when it was brought to your attention, the poles were erected, what did you do to put, to put a stop to the project continuing? First and foremost, my second, my second concern I have is you're the Public Works Director, not Harold Garcia. You should be the one going out there and looking at the, at the projects and, and assuring that they're occurring property, not Mr. Garcia. Mr. Garcia is an elected official, which he has expertise in that area. But you're the, you're the individual hired to, for these projects, not Mr. Harold Garcia.
So, uh, Madam Chair, I did go out. I met with the resident. I took pictures. I sent them over. I, we, I got a plat from the, from the, uh, planning and zoning department. I met and that plat and that, uh, guided me, guided me in having a conversation with the resident. And at that time, um, at that time, uh, Robert Archuleta gave me the plat and I sat down with Rick and the resident had his own. It was the exact same plat of his deeded property stating, this is my property line. I'm putting my fence there. At that point, I, Robert Archuleta told me, we can't have him take it down. It's on his property line. That was the direction I got. So that's, I did not pursue it after that. That happened October 29th, when I met with that resident, trying to guide him. I met with several residents. I met with several residents with their concerns and I met with them. And, and then I understand the concern because I was there. I seen the fence. So I know Commissioner Garcia went out yesterday, but I dealt with this a month and a half ago and tried to get some, some guidance of what we should do, proper permitting. And, and we don't do the permitting because it was in his property like that. And I didn't proceed at that time.
There's something very wrong.
Other question is gonna be then, when you saw that, that that was occurring, why did you not contact our attorney and get, he has the expertise for that area where he could have guided you as to what to do instead of.
Madam Chair. I, I, I went to, I let my county manager know and that, and that was, that he is my supervisor and that that's the direction I took.
That, Madam, Madam Chair, um, I will meet with Dave Romero, myself, and the Public Works Director to look at the legal actions that we could take immediately.
Thank you. And if we are missing something, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Manager and, uh, Mr. Garcia. And again, if there is something in place, I believe that there was a violation here. And if it was a mixed mistake on the county planning and zoning that, but we should not be allowing anybody to put a fence in a public road or a county work. And I did ask Carol to go look at it. I also asked, um, Arnold, since he is the road supervisor, Arnold told me that Gerald, his, his boss told him not to go look at it because it was, uh, he was taking care of it. But I asked Arnold, I think Arnold, as our road supervisor, should know what the condition of the roads are that he is supervising in the county. So that, I took that upon myself to also ask because I was desperate when I saw this. I was getting calls about this road and I hadn't been on it late. And then when I went and saw for myself, I just, I was just, I, I'm, I just appalled. I'm aghast at how horrible it is and what a violation it is and how this landowner, any landowner can put a fence because it's on their property. A lot of us own property and you know, you just can't go put your fence and block a road, regardless if it's your property. So there's some violation. If not, we need to fix it and get an ordinance in place. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Romero, Attorney.
Commissioners, uh, my approach will be the same approach as we've taken with other cases like this. I believe initially that it is a public road, either by our maintenance of the road or by the use of the road or by the statutory easements that come with the road. And especially we've been taking advantage, I've been taking advantage of the law of prescriptive easements. That if a road has been used in a certain condition for many years, over seven years, adverse possession, then the road belongs to the public and the county has a right and a duty to enforce it. I, I looked at the pictures of the road, uh, yesterday and I'm amazed. The, the road is, is, is a very well maintained section and half of it has been fenced off. I think it's inappropriate for any landowner to take it upon themselves without doing the proper research and work just to put up a fence. And it is a safety hazard. And my intentions are, now that I've become aware of it, is to talk with the manager, with P and Z, uh, with Public Works and see exactly what legal right they have. And I'm not, I'm not expecting to find any legal right that'll stand up to my attack. And what I will do is I will send first of all, a, a letter to the property owner telling him that he needs to take that fence down immediately. And then secondly, if he doesn't do it within, uh, a short period of time, a couple of days, then I'm gonna tell him that I'm gonna file suit. And if he still doesn't respond, I'll do like in the other cases, I will file suit and we will stop it. Because what I've found is private property landowners, usually from out of state, they take as much as they can get away with unless somebody steps up to stop them. And the average citizen in San Miguel or neighbor doesn't have the money or the legal power to stop action like that. And they're depending on us, uh, to go ahead and take it to court and make them prove that they have a right to do so. And I feel confident I can be successful on this issue also.
Thank you, Attorney Romero.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, so we move, we move forward to the Board of Finance meeting.
Madam Chair.
Manager Martinez.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm requesting that we go back to item number six. In item number six, it says, action requested of commission is action required. I understand that it says staff recommendation, but since, and maybe Dave Romero can, uh, interpret this, this item, but it, but it does state on the agenda requesting action by the commission for item number six, resolution of extension of El Camino and Riverwalk pedestrian and bicycle trail.
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I believe that that language is sufficient enough to put the world on notice that we're going to be voting on it. It's not as clear as I'd like it to be and it doesn't answer things like we normally see. But it's sufficient enough that I would be comfortable in saying that we can vote on the matter.
Commissioners.
Well, I, I'll listen to our legal counsel, but our staff needs to get it together because item number six, resolution, it's conflicting. It says action required, then it says staff recommendation for informational purposes only. So I'll, I'll follow the advice. I'm okay with, um, following the league, the, our council's advice.
And I apologize, Commissioner, that's my fault.
Commissioner Nahad, Trujillo and Garcia, are you all okay with listening to that?
Madam Chair, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. We need to vote on it because we need to move on this project. We can't be holding this project back. If it's gonna delay it, I'm, I'm in favor of making a motion that we approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Nahad to approve. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Garcia, are those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the Board of Finance meeting. Attorney Romero.
The Board of Finance meeting?
Yes. Do we have one? Manager Martinez.
Madam. Yes, we do. On the agenda, it's item number eight.
Okay. So Board of Transfer for the month of November, presenter Ms. Bertha Bustamante, County Treasurer.
Madam Chair, Ms. Melinda will be presenting.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Melinda.
Um, good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, and Chair Commissioners. Um, in regards to the wire transfers, I can let you know what we have today. For the month of October, I apologize, bear with me, gonna try to find some report. For the month of October, there were trans, there was a transfer of six thousand, one forty-one, forty-four from our general fund to our payroll fund to cover a census stipend and one uniform allowance transfer. Uh, another transfer in October seventh, twenty twenty, in the amount of two forty-seven, three thirty-eight, seventy-three for payroll. Uh, another transfer of two fifty-nine, eight thirty-five, sixty-four on ten twenty-one, um, also for payroll. And then on ten twenty-six, twenty twenty, there was a transfer of five hundred thousand dollars from our general reserve account to, um, oh, to our detention center as a part of our budget to transfers. On ten twenty-nine, a wire transfer of fifty-one thousand, thirty-six dollars and seventy-four cents to cover the November half. Then on November, November fourth, a wire transfer of two sixty-six, two thirty-three, eighty-nine, um, to cover payroll. On November twelfth, um, a transfer of two fifty-nine, oh, forty-nine, ninety from our general fund to the fire account. Um, that was for twenty percent of the annual distributions tied to the, um, state allotment. And on November eighteenth, the wire transfer of two fifty-eight, eight eleven, fifty-four to cover payroll for, um, for the, for the check date of November nineteenth. On eleven twenty-four, a transfer of thirty-seven thousand, one fifty-nine, fifty-eight to Burnley County for the December half payment. And those, that will be the transfers for both October and November.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Melinda. We move, we move on to Budget Adjustment Resolution twenty twenty dash twelve dash zero eight dash F one. Ms. Melinda.
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioners, um, before I begin this, before I forget also, um, Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank you for your term that you have served with the county and everything that you did. It was really a pleasure working with you. And I just wish you all the best, um, for what you do next. And I just hope our paths cross again. And for you, Vice Chairman, um, I also appreciate and respect you. I've known you for a long time and I know you've held a lot of positions in our county and it's so much appreciated. And I always get confused what to call you when I see you. Some are Mr. Nahad, Sheriff Nahad, um, Judge Nahad, Commissioner Nahad. So it's gonna be interesting to see what I get to call you next. But I know it's always gonna be with honor when I see with you. So thank you both.
This will work, but thank you for what you do for the county as well.
Exactly.
Wonderful finance director. I've known several and you've been, you've been awesome. You've been the best. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, this particular item is a resolution twenty twenty dash twelve dash oh eight dash F one. The first adjustment in this budget resolution is a reduction of a transfer um, to the detention center by thirty-three thousand dollars. We were going over the budget, the county, um, transfers, um, there's over like a million dollars worth of transfers that go to the detention center. And we're able to find some savings in there in order to reduce our transfer to the detention center and increase our general fund budget by thirty-three thousand dollars in order to, um, in order to do some things that we needed to in the general fund. Then in the general fund, there was an increase in the budget of thirty-three thousand dollars to hire a temporary physician in the sheriff's office. Um, Fund seven fifty-one, um, the county will be budgeting two thousand dollars in donations to this particular fund for a holiday drive for needy families. The county will only extend up to the amount of the actual donation, but will not exceed the two thousand dollars budgeted. And this will be administered by our sheriff's department. Um, the next transfer, I've changed it a little from what was presented in your package. Um, but it's the Sapiyo Volunteer Fire Department will be donating eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. I had just a flat eighty-nine thousand. It's eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars from their five oh one C three, which will be but budgeted in Fund four oh seven, Department one oh two. And these funds are to be used to purchase SCBA's for the department. Then the other budget adjustment or the final budget adjustment is an adjustment to the Pecos Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. They'll be donating that one hundred thousand dollars and we'll be budgeting it in, let's just say, Fund four seventeen, Department one oh two. These funds will be used towards the building cost of the Pecos Canyon Fire Station two.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Varela, second by Commissioner Garcia. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to item number ten, Resolution twenty twenty dash twelve dash zero eight dash F two. Ms. Melinda.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, this is actually an amendment to a previous resolution that we have. Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, this is actually an amendment to a previous resolution that we had. That resolution number was two thousand fifteen oh three, ten dash F one, which created Fund Seven Fifty-One. And that Fund Seven Fifty-One was created for the Joint Law Enforcement Task Force. And it's currently being um used to account for the activity for the region for overtime expenditures that are reimbursed by the city. Um, now that the sheriff's office has requested the desire to obtain donations and to procure those holiday items that are needed um at this point in time. Um, we're wanting to open up this fund to also be used for that purpose, that way we have. Somewhat of a designated fund for it, and we know where those funds are. Um, the sheriff's office and my office will work together in establishing protocols um for the donated transaction. Uh, we've already run this to our attorney, Mr. Romero, I'll also share this with our county manager, which is giving permission to do so.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Trujillo, are those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we move on to item number eleven, Indigent Claims, Ms. Melinda.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, we should have a report with you that show. Um, probably about eight different claims that were paid to El Centro and or Riverside for um the month of October.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by. Second by Commissioner Varela, are those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we move on to item number twelve, Budget Report for the period of July first, twenty twenty through October thirty-first, twenty twenty. Information purposes only, Ms. Melinda.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is our year-to-date fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget as of the end of October thirty-first, twenty twenty. And it is for informational purposes only.
So are any questions? We move on to item number thirteen, General Entry Report for the month of October twenty twenty, Ms. Melinda.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this report is also run, um, or is run for the period of October twenty twenty. And it shows all general entries that were physically entered in during that particular month, and it's for informational purposes only.
Any questions? We move on to item number fourteen, Receipt Report for the month of October twenty twenty, Ms. Melinda.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, this report is run off of our cash sharing system, and it's of all receipts that were um. Um, run through our treasurer's office, I don't think this includes the property tax for all other types of payments that come in through their office.
Any questions? We move on to item number fifteen, Cash Balance Report for the month of October twenty twenty, Ms. Melinda.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, this is a listing of our funds. Have more than one entry. All the different balances that we have as of the end of October.
Any questions? We move on to item number sixteen, Account Payable Report for the month of October twenty twenty, Ms. Melinda.
And Commissioners, this is a listing of all been processed by our office of October twenty twenty, and. The report of um payments that were for your county on behalf of San Miguel County.
Do we have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Nahar, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Varela, are those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next, uh, before, before I call for a adjournment, again, I'd like to thank San Miguel County and its employees for all your hard work. Um, in running our county, and I'd like to tell everybody, God bless you, keep safe, and. Vaya con Dios, we'll see you all later, can I have a?
Madam Chair, before we close.
Yes.
I'd like, I'd like to request, now that we're in open session, before we, we go out of session for the year. Uh, being that we have a quorum, I'd like to give direction to our county manager to schedule. Uh, our county commission meeting for January the first. When our two commissioners elected take office, because otherwise. Come January the second, we're not gonna have a chair or a vice chair. And there's business that needs to be taken care of, and so I'd like to request now, uh, before we close. And if I have to follow up with an email, I'll follow up with an email, uh, but I'd like to request a a special commission meeting for January the first.
You got that, Ma- Manager Martinez?
Yes.
Will we all be sworn in by then? When are we being sworn in to our new positions?
Uh, Madam, Madam Chair members of the commission, I'll meet with Ebony, um, I'm pretty sure we do that before. The Christmas break, but I know she has a few items that we need to discuss, I'll find out with her.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Garcia, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Trujillo, thank you all, we'll see you all later.
Thank you, bye. Bye, thank you, Chris, thanks Maria.
Bye bye, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Maria.
You're welcome, thank you.